Um, so it's, um, hey, hey, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, just, just, uh, um, so I'm on the straight and narrow path here. Um, is it an official commissioners meeting?
Yes, yes, it's an official commissioners meeting.
Okay.
Dan, Dan, really quickly before you get started, who's hosting because I'm disabled as far as sharing screen?
That would be Allison, and she has to go to the bottom of her screen which says share screen, and she can enable that.
All right, Allison, can you? All right, awesome.
Yeah, I was assuming Allison was the Cheltenham Township local.
And I do have the PowerPoint presentation that Mitch had sent, so let me know when you're ready for that to go up.
Oh, okay, you, you want to drive it, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, so, so I, I'm, I'm going to get, get started. Um, so if it's an official commissioners meeting, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I'm going to welcome to this town hall from your Board of Commissioners. Um, this meeting is not like our typical meetings because we are calling it a town hall meeting. Uh, the purpose of it is a single purpose to discuss the EIT referendum. Um, and we're going to have a presentation and it will be followed by questions. Uh, but just backing up a second, um, my name is Dan Norris and I'm the president of the board. And all seven commissioners are participating in tonight's Zoom meeting. That's an important message. This is an important topic that the commissioners have been discussing. Um, and, um, all the commissioners are united, it's a unanimous decision to put this referendum on the ballot in November. I, I've stated this before, I'm going to state it again, Cheltenham has a great group of commissioners. The, my fellow six commissioners, um, everyone has their own skills and talents, everyone contributes. Um, and frankly, um, Cheltenham should be proud to be represented by this group of commissioners. And all seven of us are supporting the EIT referendum, and we urge, we all urge you to vote yes in the November ballot. Um, so tonight we're going to begin by explaining the reasons why we believe that Cheltenham needs the flexibility of the referendum, that the referendum provides us in planning for the financial challenges facing the township. Uh, after the commissioner's presentation, we will have time for questions. Our goal, frankly, our goal all the time, but very specifically tonight, and as we go through this process of communicating to the public about the EIT, our goal is to be transparent about our need and to provide information on the various other steps that we've been working on involving both revenue and expenses, which we have taken or are reviewing options to take to get Cheltenham on a sound and prudent financial path. Taking these steps will ensure that Cheltenham can provide the quality services its citizens want and to keep Cheltenham strong. Okay, so now I'm going to ask Baron Holland, who's the Chair of the Finance Committee, to explain why we need your yes vote on the EIT referendum. And, um, I'm, um, I think Mitch Sigmundfeld is also going to be contributing to the presentation, but I'm urging and encouraging all my fellow commissioners, uh, either interrupt them during the presentation, they love that. Um, or, uh, or assist with the questions that will come from the public. Um, because frankly, I think it's important that the township residents hear from all of us. Okay, you're, you're on Baron, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, today will be a, we, we will have a small presentation, but we really want this to be more of a dialogue, so the majority of this town hall will be questions, which will be at the end of the presentation, so please jot your questions down, be prepared, hold those questions to the end, because we will, we're looking for questions, we're looking for feedback, we're looking for, for comments. Um, Allison, if you could go to the second slide on the screen, that'd be great. Um, so as, um, you know, as Dan discussed, um, with his opening, you know, we have a, um, a financial issue here, and, you know, it's not something new, it's something that has been, uh, with us for, for many, many years. Uh, we received a grant, um, to study how we can better our financial situation. Um, and we hired a consultant PFM to help us, uh, come up with strategies and ideas and ways to strengthen our current financial situation. Um, so that has gotten us to this point today. Some of the bullet points from the PFM study, which is listed on the township website, and you have full access to, um, is that two thirds of the township expenses are tied to personnel and commitments, uh, with our, our unions, our collective bargaining unions. Um, we currently today, and, and a feather in, in, you know, the former township manager, the current township manager, and our Director of Fiscal Affairs, and all of our department heads, we do a lot with a little. Um, we run very, very lean from an operations standpoint, um, and we really know how to maximize uh, the revenue that's coming into the, to the township. But the issue is, uh, projected revenues have been shrinking, um, as a result of local and regional business and employment conditions, you know, lower real estate valuations, uh, and some changes to municipal accounting practices. Um, and a lot of this was pre-COVID. So now you layer, uh, the issue that, that COVID, uh, the issues, I should say, uh, plural, that COVID brings, and, you know, it just amplifies the, uh, you know, the situation. Uh, the PPV, PPE, the safety costs, the overtime, all of these things, you know, are adding to our projected revenue shortfall for this year, and also as we go into, to 2021 and beyond.
Baron, I just want to jump in on the revised municipal accounting, Baron. Um, and, and that is that, for instance, as an example, pension, uh, calculations are imposed on the township, and the pension funds are force calculated at an eight percent return, which obviously creates a very difficult situation in a down market, uh, climate. So those are the kinds of things that we have to deal with that aren't completely visible to the residents, but are things that we have to deal with, um, on a global basis. Thanks.
Yep, thank you, thank you for clarifying that, that may prevent a question in the, uh, in the future. Um, so, you, you know, if we look at our budget this year, based upon everything that I discussed, we're looking at about a million and a half, um, in a projected budget deficit that we were not planning for when we approved the budget, um, you know, earlier in, in the, in the year. Uh, when we fast forward and we look at 2021, uh, we're projecting based upon a lot of assumptions and a lot of unknowns, because we don't necessarily fully know the impact of COVID at this time, but we are estimated anywhere between a two and a half and a four million dollar, uh, budget deficit, uh, from all of these issues. So, you know, the goal really is to try to maintain, um, a level and standard of service that Cheltenham is used to, and, and it really, um, is synonymous with the township. Um, there are ways that we can try to build in some efficiencies and deliver services, you know, at or near the same level, you know, being a little more efficient, but the goal is to, to try to do that. We don't want to cut services. Uh, that is a, a lever that we could potentially pull if we need to, but that is not the goal and the objective of this. Um, you know, the last, uh, piece here on this slide, you know, the traditional sources of the township revenue are really unlikely to materialize this year or next year. Because of all the things that, that I mentioned earlier, the decreasing in, uh, flat real estate values, you know, the decrease in the business tax revenue because of the closures, uh, the high unemployment, which is leading to a decrease in, in the EIT, so we're exploring these alternative, uh, additional funding sources in order to try to fill that gap.
And just another point of clarification, Baron, we don't know what the total impact of COVID, unemployment, underemployment, layoffs, and, uh, and reduced, uh, retail and business transactions in the township. So we know that we have this range that we have to deal with, and that's sort of why we're exploring these options.
Hey Mitch, you should introduce yourself, because some people may not know who you are.
Uh, it's Commissioner Mitch Sigmundfeld, I am the co, I am, uh, the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Allison, next slide. Wonderful, so, um, if you think about, um, your own household, right, you have your revenue and you, and you have your expenses, then, you know, there's an ebb and flow to that on a, on a year-to-year basis. You know, from a, from a municipality standpoint, we have a, a structural, um, imbalance in our budget. Um, and, and there's really limited revenue growth, um, limited levers that we have to, to grow the revenue. If you, if you think about our township, and many of you know that, uh, we are a bedroom community, primarily residential, with not a lot of, of commercial development, which, which makes those levers a little bit more, um, um, difficult to, to utilize. Um, you know, earned income tax growth of about two percent, um, low revenues from other channels such, uh, such as fines and fees and things of that nature, you know, prevent us from really a lot of different creative ways to generate revenue. Um, employee compensation and health benefits contribute to a significant uh, portion of our township operating budget. Um, those have been, um, negotiated, so we are, uh, required to, you know, abide by, you know, the, the commitment that we've made, so there's not a lot of flexibility, um, there. We do have some, um, upcoming contract negotiations that are coming up, and we will do our best to renegotiate more favorable terms, um, for the township. Um, in addition, you know, our, our debt service has been another, um, cost driver. Um, historically, uh, we've issued debt for every significant capital project that we've taken on, um, and that results in a large, um, annual increase in our debt service payments from year to year. Um, over the past couple of years, you know, we have been very prudent in, uh, determining, you know, what projects absolutely need to happen, um, and ensure that we fund those, and, and what are, and what projects could be potentially deferred, scaled back, or we could identify, um, alternate sources of, uh, of income for that specific project, you know, i.e., uh, grants. Um, Allison, let's go to the, uh, the next item. All right, so Mitch, you'd like to take from here?
Sure, um, and, and I'll walk through this slowly, and, uh, if any of the commissioners want to weigh in on some of these topics, please do. So we've had major, uh, expense cuts and reductions, we've already initiated significant cost-cutting measures. Uh, later on I'll show you, but so far for this year, we've, uh, we've decreased our budget by eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, and that's due to furloughs and layoffs that have reduced payroll and healthcare or pension obligations. We've eliminated or delayed all but essential capital expenditures. Uh, and over the last couple of years, we really have, uh, delivered to the township a no-frills budget with department cuts and still maintain the level of services essential, both on, on the core services and on the things that contribute to the quality of life in this township. Uh, what we've come to realize is, uh, that businesses usual really won't work anymore. You know, historically, there's always been that, um, willingness to pass on increases uh, with respect to raising property taxes, and many of you online know that we have a reputation, Cheltenham does, for having high disproportionately high property taxes compared to our, uh, neighboring municipalities. Those property taxes of, impact every owner, every property owner, impact renters regardless of age, employment, status, or ability to pay. They're increasing financial burdens on those who are hard-pressed to really incur bigger tax payments and write those checks. So the fact is that we have to look at other ways of doing things. We've explored the other revenue sources, and they just don't appear to be able to, uh, compensate for these shortfalls. And why is that? The market conditions, COVID-19 has clearly had an adverse impact, not just here, but across the region, across the state, across the country, but we have specific issues that we need to, to do. Um, can I, is there a way, uh, to keep that chat box off of the, the slides so that I can, uh, see everything? If you can, um, Allison. Um, we know that federal, state, and county funding official, uh, sources are not really coming back to the municipality. Um, you've seen, everybody's seen that there's PPP dollars for, uh, different kinds of businesses, that there's CARES funds and that kind of thing. Right now municipalities are not in line and haven't really been, uh, shown the door to additional funding. So that's something we're exploring, but so far there's not that much available to us. Although some of township, um, entities such as the library system was able to get two hundred and seventy-two thousand PPP funds, et cetera, but to the township, those things aren't available. There are also alternate revenue channels which mostly are under duress, the business privilege tax, the LST tax, and most of those at this point are really underperforming, and so that's contributing to our, our deficit and contributing to our need to explore other options. Next slide. So, this board, the township leadership and the consultant recommendation, uh, have come after us and made, um, and, and we've come to the conclusion that an earned income tax increase of up to point five percent for the township is the best short-term option. It was recommended by PFM, which in and of itself doesn't guarantee that we would do it, but the fact is that it, it opens up the opportunity, um, to potentially recover or, or make amends for that shortfall and basically not have to make what are going to be, um, really draconian cuts to services and that kind of thing.
Township, uh, and, and Mitch, really quickly, just to clarify on, on this point, um, the up to portion. So, you know, we are recommending on the referendum, uh, up to, or excuse me, a, a half a percent or fifty basis point increase. Uh, we don't know at this point in time if we would need to use that full amount to fill the budget gap, but to Dan's point earlier, he talked about flexibility and the ability for us to have that lever, um, if we needed to pull it, is the reason that we're, we're looking for that amount.
Thank you. Um, the, the other thing to look at is township EIT increases have been implemented in some neighboring municipalities. Example, in Norris Town, the township has a total, um, tax of two point one percent, one point six percent goes to the township, the balance, the forty-five percent goes to their school district. Coatsville, again, it's a total of two and a half percent, of which two percent, um, eighty percent of that goes to the township. And Allentown has nearly a, a two percent tax, of which one point five percent, again, goes to the township. And it, it's our opinion and the council that we've received that the earned income tax represents more reliable, predictable source of operating funds to maintain the essential quality of life services. Now we're not just talking about police, fire, EMS, et cetera. We're talking about the things that make Cheltenham a special and unique place. The libraries, parks and trails, special collections, leaf collections, your Christmas tree collections, the pools, which this year unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we, we can't, um, we, we can't open, but the fact is that we've done assessments where the pools, just to have the, the shelves replaced, could be anywhere from three to five million dollars. So it's really important that we're able to do this. These proposed increases really only impact those that are receiving a paycheck. It avoids assessing those with fixed incomes, retirees and seniors who are living on social security, pensions, or modest investments. And I think that's an important thing to emphasize, that we've heard over time, and, and every time there is a, uh, an increase in the real estate tax, how much, you know, how, um, difficult it is for those on fixed incomes and limited resources to be able to afford it. Um, township residents would unfortunately work in Philadelphia, benefit from the Sterling Act, and because of the way that's structured unfairly as it may be, they don't pay the township earned income taxes. So, I'm missing the last part of the slide. Uh, can you bring it up a tiny bit? I missed, okay. It's not there. The recommendation, if somebody else can see that, I, um, for some reason I'm not able to, to view it.
Yeah, so, so, you know, we're really just talking about the recommendation for the referendum to the, to allow the EIT increase. That is the reason for the town hall tonight. Um, one, uh, point that I want to make, which isn't on the slide. Um, if for some reason we were, uh, we were allowed to, to, uh, place the referendum, and it was approved, and, uh, it got, uh, voted in, then, uh, if we took a, a resident that made fifty thousand dollars as an example, the, and, and we assessed the additional fifty basis points or half a percent, that would equate to, uh, an additional two hundred and fifty dollars in EIT tax for that resident. Um, and that EIT tax is paid, is deducted from your paycheck. So for someone who's on a bi-weekly, uh, pay system, that would equate to about nine dollars and sixty-one cents, um, every, every paycheck, just to give you a general frame of reference of, of, uh, of what we're looking at.
Next slide. So, um, the voter referendum process. On June twenty-ninth, we made a decision regarding the adoption of the ordinance placing a referendum on the 2020 ballot to amend the Home Rule Charter to permit the increase of the IT. Um, by August fourth, the referendum has to be filed with the Board of Elections. And then in that interim period, October fourth through November second, a notice of the election, um, and, uh, ballot, uh, question will be in at least one newspaper in general circulation, and obviously, it's not going to be limited to that. I want to make it clear that this is the first of many public meetings, or whatever we need to, uh, to basically download and inform the public, uh, of what our decision is, and hopefully, uh, to encourage and gain public support. November third is Election Day, um, it's a presidential election, and one of the things, or one of the questions that were asked of us is, why would you take the risk of putting a referendum during a presidential election? And we don't believe it's a risk. We actually give, we actually believe it gives the largest number of potential voters the chance to approve or deny the referendum. So in fact, um, while we want this to happen this year, we understand that people will have the right and be able to make the decision, which is why we've launched this first town hall, and we're going to have lots of meetings. There's information that's going to be posted on the website, um, and various social media channels will have it. So if by, uh, January twenty-one, we're, we're identifying what our shortfalls are for 2021, the Board of Commissioners will advertise, will hold additional public meetings to discuss the increase, and will vote to increase, uh, the EIT as, as proposed for the 2021 calendar year. Next slide. This is an important thing before we start to get into.
I don't know what it was.
Can we get everybody on mute until we finish, please? Thank you. Uh, if the referendum fails to pass, what are the boards' options? Well, here they are. Potentially significant reductions in township, what we call quality of life services, such as libraries, parks, trails, leaf collection pools, all the other services and amenities that all of us expect from, uh, this municipality, and that the, the township, the staff, et cetera, deliver, you know, in a first-rate fashion. There will be potentially dramatic increases in the township real estate tax millage rates. Um, and that'll be in addition to whatever millage increases the school district imposes. It'll be passed on to every homeowner, which includes seniors, retirees, the unemployed, the people who have recently laid off, and it will likely be passed on to renters by their landlords. It may also necessitate significant increases in our commercial tax rates, business privilege taxes, et cetera, which might hurt, um, and be a disincentive for additional business investment retention or expansion in the township. We already are facing reduced commercial revenues as a result of COVID-19 and its impact. And frankly, there will be less predictable sources of income through fiscal 2022. So we're making this recommendation and hoping this, uh, comes into fruition in order to avoid having these extreme actions have to be taken. Uh, next slide to the questions. So we already received some questions and some of which, uh, Mitch, already answered, go ahead.
Look, I, I just want to interrupt, there, there are also a number of questions in the chat. Um, so, w- once we get through these, we'll make sure we, we hit some of those questions in the chat as we open it up for, uh, for other questions. I just don't want anyone to think that we're, um, that, that we haven't seen those. We, we have and, and we'll respond to them.
Great, thanks, thanks, Commissioner Norman. Um, we've already kind of spoken about the fact that there are, um, other taxing and revenue generation options that are available to us as, uh, the township board. Um, we prefer not to do that, but we recognize that that may be a consideration. Uh, quest, and again, these were just preliminary questions that were given to us in the last day or so. Um, why conduct the referendum in a presidential election year? And as I mentioned, we want to maximize the community awareness and enable complete or ma, the maximum voter participation, to either give it a thumbs up, which we hope, or a thumbs down, in which case we'll have to make other determinations. Um, I mentioned how much the township has so far saved in cuts and furloughs that it's made this year, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to date. There are other cuts or deductions that, uh, we can make, and some of those we'll get into. But I think it's important to try as much as possible to retain the baseline of services and support. Uh, and here's a, a perfect example. Um, the other day we had, uh, we had flooding, the other week, we had flooding two separate days. That required significant amount of time and attention from Public Works, from EMS, from the police, from the fire department, those are things that you've come to expect in this municipality. And frankly, we have to look at those things and make sure that all those services, uh, both the basic ones and the ones that have to come in extraordinary situations, are always going to be available to protect the township, to protect our residents, and, and to, to maintain the quality of life that all of you have come to respect, expect. Um, and, and I think again, I, I, we've mentioned some of the other, um, services that can be impacted if the referendum, referendum fails to pass. I think some of those are included in a few of your questions. Is there an alternative to the referendum and charter amendment? There's actually a Senate Bill eleven-eighty-eight, which actually.
Mitch, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Um, our council sent us out, uh, an email a few minutes ago that says this passed in the House at five forty PM. So please explain it, but I want you to know that happened.
Well, that's extraordinary and good timing. Uh, this bill actually enables us to put this referendum onto the, uh, onto the November ballot without, uh, with this ballot question, without going through the referendum process. So, uh, Solicitor Bagley, is that a correct, uh, determination?
Yeah, if, uh, if the governor were to sign this, it would allow the township to, uh, just focus on adopting an ordinance to raise the EIT up to, uh, an additional point five percent and not go through the November, November referendum.
I, I have to tell you, that's, that's, uh, exceptional timing, but the fact is, the fact, thank you, Ed. The fact is that it is our obligation to share with you all the circumstances that have caused us to make this determination, to make this recommendation, to be in this position. Uh, the last question, um, what about sharing the increase with the school district? Um, we would love to be magnanimous and do that. The school district and the township operate with very separate, uh, fiscal responsibilities. And the fact is that we now have to look at this exclusively for the benefit of maintaining services, of retaining the, the level of support, employment, et cetera, that's going to keep quality of life and the expectations in line. Um, the school district obviously has a budget, and they will, uh, they will, uh, make their decision, and in fact, probably do some in, tax increases. Therefore, we, we're, we want to do the necessary level. Therefore, we, we're, we want to do the necessary level of education and disclosure. This, this isn't something that we wanted to, to sneak on you or put in a, you know, put in an amendment, et cetera. So I think it's really, it's, the timing is propitious, but the fact is that it was important for us to get everybody aware and on board of what our situation is. So that's not me barking and I hope it's not one of the residents. And I think we're on to the next slide, which I believe somebody else is going to take charge of.
No, you're going to do that? Okay.
Yeah, I'll take that. Well, just, just a point of clarification. Dogs are actually residents too, so we'll, we'll, we'll throw them in the mix.
Well, can we tax them?
Good point. So one other, one other point that I would just like to emphasize is the fact that, you know, the, the SB 11, 1188 passed both the House and both the Senate, the House and Senate, and is landing on the governor's desk. I think just reinforces, you know, the point that we were sort of, yeah, I guess sort of trailblazers ahead of this and, and trying to move forward and we're sort of on the right track. Who knows if he's going to sign it or not, but the fact that, you know, it made it to that level, I think reinforces the, the importance of, of that, that all municipalities are facing this issue.
Yeah, and Baron, the, the conversation would have to happen with the residents, no matter what, right?
Exactly.
So the fact that we're doing it now, maybe we're a couple hours ahead of the game. But, 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 but it's an important issue that, that this board is, is happy to lay out for, for our residents and our constituents to make sure that you understand where we're, where we're coming from and we understand where you're coming from.
Exactly. Thank you. So really quickly, just some ground rules for participation. We're, we're first going to go to the chat questions. We'll start there. We'll run through those and then once we're done there, we'll, we'll take verbal questions. You can raise your hand in the Zoom meeting to be acknowledged and then Allison will call on you for the question. If you would like to submit another chat question, you can continue to do that. Please state your name and your address because we'll be, just like a normal meeting, we'll be keeping that data. Try to be brief as possible. If your question's already been asked or you've heard the answer, please avoid being redundant. We want to be respectful of your time. And, you know, please restrict your comments and critiques to the subject around the referendum and the proposed increase.
This is Commissioner Brockington. I just want to remind everyone that this is being taped. So if you want to go back or you know someone who needs to listen to this again, you will be able to get this, this whole session on our website.
Thanks, sir.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and start with a couple of questions in, in the chat box. And commissioners, if you want to pull up the chat and just sort of follow along with me here. And, you know, after I take a couple, maybe you can, you can take a couple. Let me pull up the chat here. Alrighty. So I'm not going to say the name of the resident. I'll just, first question, what additional services are being incurred during the pandemic? It seems as if costs would go down, businesses were closed during some of that time. What services would be cut should you not meet that financial goal? So great question. You know, the additional services are really all around COVID. The additional expenses, I should say, are really all around COVID and the pandemic. So it's, it's PPE, it's, you know, additional EMS responsibilities, things of that nature. But even more than the additional expense, I think the issue from the, the pandemic is the decrease in the revenue that we have coming in. So it's not so much the increase in the expenses, it's the decrease in, in the revenue. And what services would be cut should we not meet the, meet the goal? You know, we really haven't laid out a plan for that. I mean, I know Philadelphia went to a biweekly recycling pickup. They still pick up trash weekly, but they went biweekly on recycling. So, you know, maybe something like around that with refuse or some other things. We would have to be creative on how we could cut expenses until, and still trying to balance the budget.
Aaron, can I add something? Can I add something? For those of you, for instance, as an example of the kinds of additional expenses, we furloughed employees and we paid, I believe it's 75 or 90 days of their health insurance. We didn't want them to have the exposure of having to Cobra. So we in fact carried health insurance. I think that's continuing. We've had a number of police and EMS employees who were involved in supporting the community on COVID, bringing people to hospitals, et cetera, taking people from nursing homes, actually being exposed and having to quarantine. Those folks have been paid. We needed people to, to backfill for them. So there was overtime paid and that kind of thing. So while it may not be apparent to you, we've maintained a level of services at times with reduced staff based on some of the people who've had exposure. There are significant amounts of dollars for PPE, personal protective equipment that's had to be incurred. And again, those are things that are coming directly out of the township budget. So that's just some of the additional items and some of the things that we felt an obligation to do in the course of trying to meet some of the expenses, et cetera, during this process. And there may be others that other people want to share as well.
Go ahead, Ann.
Okay, thanks. I'll just jump in and add that, reemphasize that a lot of these challenges existed pre-COVID. So a lot of our cost cutting, you know, we haven't, we've been presenting over the past few years. And maybe people who haven't attended our budget workshops in the fall that are public and all these things don't really realize the extent to which we have been holding the line. Examples, just I'll throw out whatever comes to mind. The, the salt shed that is needed in Public Works to secure and the amount of salt we need to take care of our highways on an icy winter day. They've had to make do without the equipment they need to secure that resource. Because we really couldn't afford or didn't feel that this was the highest priority. That's just typical of the kind of, in a sense, cost cutting and make the best of your situation that the departments are having to do. Meanwhile, we've been very vigilant about things like cost overruns in contracts and construction. When we said no frills, we mean it. The pools have been repaired and repaired rather than the luxury of doing what we'd really all like to provide. User costs have, our users have had to bear the brunt of some things such as playgrounds where we've asked volunteers to, to rise to those occasions and contribute to those facilities. So I just, I don't want anybody to think this is a sudden lark. We have been working and we are, and I think if legislation really did go through it, it indicates that this is a very legitimate stressor in municipal governments across the state. So I'll let you go on. I want to get to the other questions.
Let's get to the next question about layoffs. There were, there were, we did for a lot. Go ahead.
Yep. Yeah. So I'm not going to read the, the comments. I'll just really focus on, on the, on the questions. There's a question, you know, has the township considered that the residents of the township are also dealing with revenue slash expense issues due to COVID? Yes, 100%. That is definitely the case. That is one of the reasons actually why we were looking at an EIT situation versus more of a tax increase situation. Because if you're dealing with, with COVID and you're not working, you would not be impacted by that EIT increase as opposed to a more significant real estate tax increase that would be assessed that you would be responsible for. So we, yes, we have.
Yeah, Commissioner Holland, if I can add to that. You hit the nail on the head, which is that in, in many respects, to rely solely on increases or significant increases in real estate tax is fundamentally regressive, particularly for people who are suffering from the downturns associated with, with the COVID crisis. So, so it's important, I think, to emphasize that the board is looking at a whole panoply of, of efforts and strategies to deal with our structural deficit and our, and our lost revenues in a way that not only takes into consideration the, the, the residents down, potential downturns, but also diversifies both our cost cutting strategies as well as our revenue streams. And, and in that vein, if I could take one of the next questions. There, there are a number of questions about the collective bargaining agreements. And that obviously is something that we intend to look at. It is not the only thing we're going to look at. We have to look at a number of ways to rein in costs. But things like healthcare costs and, and that sort of thing are certainly, certainly things that we need to look at. As everybody said, we do run fairly lean, but, but times are tough. And, and I think our collective bargaining, our collective bargaining units are going to understand where we're coming from. And we understand that they're feeling some pain also. So the idea would be to find mutual areas where we can, where we can find savings with our, with our personnel costs. I don't mind keep going down some of these.
Sure. Go, go ahead, Matt.
Some of these questions.
Matt, on that one, I already provided other examples of line items. The health insurance extension that we've done for the furloughed employees. The necessary overtime dollars because we had staff that was ill and unavailable or quarantined. So there are significant dollars and, and we can, you know, get into that. But I think what's important to know, we're being very prudent about those. But there's also protective equipment and, and things that needed to be put physically into buildings.
Right.
To make sure that people had the adequate separation and that there are still people working in the township offices and they need to have that protection and separation physically as well.
There's, there's also a question about, someone raised that the, the tax increase, they characterize as a short-term immediate solution. But asked if we're looking at longer-term solutions, including economic development. And, and the answer is absolutely. We, we as a, we as a board are, are doing what we can. And it's part of the PFM list of strategies to improve our economic development. As, as Baron, as Commissioner Holland said earlier, we are a bedroom community. We have a lot of residents. And, and we need to be enhancing economic development, something that we're looking at. Certainly I'm looking at in the downtown Glen Side area, which is really our, one of our main streets in, in Cheltenham. And we are, we are certainly focused on economic development as, as well as other means for finding efficiencies in our expenditures. So the idea is not just to, you know, pass an EIT in order, so that we can sort of spend like drunken sailors. The, the idea is to fill the, fill the gaps so that we can provide the services that you're looking for and that you deserve, but also be able to balance our budget.
And just to add, go ahead, Ann. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Also on economic development, most of you may not realize that our actual budget, either for last year or the year before, included part of a salary to hire an economic development person. And we ended up not doing that because we felt that we needed to be doing that less expensively, with less of an, and that we did not have, didn't feel that we could disburse that kind of money to do that at this point. What's interesting, if you read the PFM report, is that indeed, that's where we're heading. That's one of the recommendations for a couple of years off after we have put ourselves on, on a more stable footing and, and have diversified and used the tax base that really gives us the more, more balance. So I just wanted to make sure you made that point.
If I might. Economic development as far as businesses is something obviously I've focused on as a commissioner and before for a number of years. We've been, everybody should understand that commissioners have been ahead of the curve on that. We recognize the difficulties of being a bedroom community, the burden it puts on all homeowners and property owners. And that we need to spread that out with business development. The change in the zoning code was done for that purpose, to allow for easier and better development in the township. We have seen the benefits of that start to take place. Things like the Elkins Estate downtown Glen Side being developed. New developers are coming to us on a regular basis with larger and smaller projects to, to try to develop in the township. Now, the pandemic has pretty much ground that to a halt, unfortunately. Construction had to stop for a while. But that will take root. It just takes a little longer for it to bear fruit. The, the leak we're, we're dealing with right now has to be plugged as quickly as possible. As that economic development takes hold, it will add to our available resources and help. But we can't depend on waiting for something that's going to happen in a year, two years, three years, four years to help us sooner. But understand, we've, we've been looking at this for a long time and we are making it happen. It just will take some time.
And let me add a couple of things to that as well. Thanks, Brad. For those of you who have been to some of the township meetings, we have made a determination that we should look into stormwater remediation with a stormwater management usage fee. As many of you know, we have a significant number of nonprofits. We have Arcadia and we have Salus. We have large, we have large hospitals. In particular Einstein and Elkins Park and Moss Rehab. And, and other religious institutions that do not pay any real estate tax. So one of the things that we're exploring, and we're going to have a very community-involved initiative. There's a stormwater management usage fee with, with, with a lot of the community being involved that will assess some of those non-taxable entities. Significant amounts of dollars for their impervious surface that contributes to our flooding and stormwater, but does not contribute from a financial demand. We, as Brad mentioned, we're encouraging development. Some of you may know that it's taken a long time, but the Ashburn Country Club property is now being worked on. And that will be a tax ratable for the municipality. And as Brad mentioned, we have a development committee that is aggressively looking at appropriate development in areas where it makes sense and areas where it doesn't create a problem. Some of you were involved in the Eastern Road Wawa. And one of the things we did in that process was we extracted close to $2 million of additional investment by the developer. A million, $200,000 for stormwater remediation where there was none. At $800,000 to improve traffic control and realign the highways. While it wasn't something that everybody was delighted with, it was a concession or compromise. But the point being that this board, in these kinds of things, needs to do and make responsible decisions and extract some of the concessions that will improve both the developments and the quality of life for folks that live in close proximity to those.
Thanks, dear.
Dan, really quickly before, before you go, just a point. I know all commissioners want to add to each one of these questions, but if we have four or five commissioners commenting on every question, you know, it'll be forever. And we'll never get to the verbal, verbal questions.
I'll shut up.
Yeah, well, from, just a couple of commissioners on each question. And then if you want to add something, once we get to the verbal or circle back, we can definitely do that.
All right.
Good point, Baron, because we do want to end this at a reasonable hour. But I wanted to pick up on one or two of the questions. Specifically, a question regarding the fairness of this specific tax. There, there can be a lot of differing opinions on what's the fairest tax, whether a real estate tax or an EIT tax or other taxes. whether a real estate tax or an EIT tax or other taxes. So this particular resident mentioned the idea, why not tax people who have income from pensions and and investments? And frankly, I agree with you completely. Unfortunately, the township does not have the authority. The state limits what type of taxes Cheltenham or other municipalities can impose. As a matter of fact, a good example there is Pennsylvania, as you know, has a personal income tax. It's happens to be a flat rate, which is quite regressive. And Pennsylvania itself doesn't tax the dividends or income or or pensions. So so I I agree with you there. And a related point there is on expenses. A couple of people are talking about why not just cut expenses instead of just looking at revenue. We need to reiterate the point that we are absolutely looking at expenses. The three union contracts are a prime example. We're not looking to balance the budget on the back of our employees. But frankly, those three union contracts are a significant item that we will be looking at, and we're looking at many other items. So I'll leave.
Thank you, Dan. I I this is Commissioner Brock. I just want to say one thing about the EIT. Many of the calls and emails I get from my residents is are senior citizens and people on a fixed income. And the one reason why I liked this particular program is EIT is that it was not going to affect the seniors and people who are on a fixed income. And I know people might say, well, I'm working, I'm not making as much. But if you're not making as much, you won't get taxed as much. It's going to be based on your income. And then there's one question here saying, asking. So basically, there's no longer a ballot question. And I think what we found out during this meeting was if the governor signs this, then we it will not have to be a valid question. Joe, am I correct at that? If the governor signs this, then this will not have to be a valid question? Is Joe on there?
He may have dropped off for a minute.
Yeah, that that is correct.
But it is correct, yeah. So it will not, so to answer that question, if the governor signs the bill, then it will not be a valid question. But we we will continue to have these informational sessions. We're not going to go away from that.
There there's one question closer to the bottom, and then maybe we could get to some of the verbal questions. There's a question about are there state and federal funds available for for the township? And and the the answer is there are some state funds, and we have applied for those. In fact, whenever we, you know, frankly, whenever we outlay an expenditure, our township staff is diligent in attempting to find grants or funds from the state or from elsewhere to cover at least a portion of that. And and they should be commended for for doing that on literally every major expenditure, including the PFM report. That being said, at this point, it's my understanding that the federal government, while, you know, some some folks got the the COVID check in the mail, there is no federal COVID money for for municipalities at this point. And whether that's going to happen or not, no one really knows. But we cannot be sort of looking out for that and and sort of keeping our fingers crossed. So while we are, in fact, you know, attempting to obtain any funds that are available out there for municipalities, they are few few and far between. And when we do try and make an expenditure, we 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 do seek out that those funds.
Are we going to go to the court and let open up the questions to the residents now?
Yeah, Allison, do you want to? You want to lead? I do see Olga with her hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Olga.
You have to unmute Olga.
Yeah, I've got it. I I'm not against an earned income tax. I actually think it's it's fair up until a certain point. Because by by, and I understand now with the state regulations, but by taxing people only with paychecks, you you really can be exacerbating the issue of income inequality. Those that have large incomes because of big investments won't pay anything. The person who makes $30,000 a year is going to have to pay something. The only way to do this is, in my opinion, is you should have some kind of bottom ceiling so that people below a certain income do not do not get hit with a hit with this tax just because they have a paycheck. And yet, the people sitting there with a lot of money won't pay anything. So I think, you know, right now, this is a big topic in our whole country, income inequality, inequality about a lot of things. And this just spreads that divide larger.
Thank you, Olga. And then just really quickly, another point is, you know, other municipalities also have their version of the EIT. So just because someone is a resident here and and works elsewhere doesn't necessarily mean that we would receive that income. I think there was someone commented in the group chat about Philadelphia and their EIT being higher than than ours. So we don't see that income from Cheltenham residents that work in Philadelphia.
And let me let me speak to to the question also. The the referendum doesn't change the rules about EIT. The 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 same folks who pay the EIT now and who are eligible to pay the EIT now would would also pay the EIT under the under under the proposed referendum. It's not increasing the number of people who are paying the EIT. It's the same pool of of folks. So it's not like we are expanding the the pool of people who would be paying paying otherwise. And I think I think Commissioner Holland made the point earlier that under the proposal, and and this also gets to Edie's question, under the proposal, which is to increase by up to 0.5%. So it does not mean that we will automatically go up to 0.5%. And it and it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be. It will be an option that the the board has to set the appropriate level based on based on the the budgetary needs.
Just just to reiterate, though, the same people will be paying more. Again, still goes back to the whole point of income inequality and and people who do have large incomes that are not contributing. And even though maybe you can't solve that issue here through through this type of a tax, maybe that's something you need to think about talking at the state level, that income should be taxed, not not paycheck.
Yep.
That's a that's a fair comment.
Yeah, a couple of a couple of additional group chat questions that came in. So once an ordinance is passed, does it give the commissioners the right to raise the maximum rate at will? Or would another referendum be required? It would give us the right to to raise it, raise it to whatever level we would deem appropriate. There's a question around.
Up to 2.5.
Right, up to 2.5, thank you. Not not unlimited, thank you. And then another question around quality of life issues rather than increasing revenue, can we decrease expenses, looking at things like less leave pickups, one pool versus two? Really, at at this stage, everything's on the table, and we're coming into to budget season, you know, in in August and September. Bruce is starting to work on that now. So we're taking a very, very hard look at both of both our operating and our capital budget going in the next year. And, you know, I think that at this stage, we're really open to a lot of different ideas.
Can I just jump in? And we invite residents to our public budget workshops every October. These are very useful for learning about how thoroughly we we get into the these these questions, and and it happens every year. And and most of it is a public process.
There was a question about the PFM, the PFM presentation. We did have PFM come in and roll out the the presentation to the community with opportunity for feedback. That wasn't the the first and only it was the first, but it's not the only time that residents will have the opportunity to give us feedback on the budget proposal and to Commissioner Rappaport's comment, I think the the budget workshops would be the appropriate venue for that.
And I'd like to remind residents that the PM, the the report that Commissioner Holland is speaking of is on our website for your review. All right, next question, other verbal verbal questions.
Next is Mr. Hislop. And then Ms. Sarivi.
Hi, it's Robert Hislop with a P, not an F, just clarifying, and that goes before this meeting. So I'm mostly on board with this. In fact, I almost entirely supported the PFM presentation of 617, the Board of Commissioners meeting. That conclusion is fair to tax income, not real estate, which can and has decreased in value. And it's even more fair under these times of great unemployment. The only thing fairer would be a tax on spending, which I am amazed every time I go past the malls, how even today there is plenty of spending. So I as far as the PFM presentation and the speaker herself, I don't even know if this is reasonable. But she was answering questions almost as quickly as I could formulate them as she spoke. So I want somebody like that in charge calling the shots. It was a very comprehensive plan. And you must use all fronts, including and primarily loads at lower spending. Now, I remember when the EIT discussion surfaced for the first time, I believe in 92, 94, and the intent was to reduce the real estate tax. It did not. The intent, they were not to become another tax vehicle, and yet they did, with both of those vehicles increasing. I fully expect that once you have the permission via the ballot or via via the governor, this EIT will be the path of least resistance. And while it is the fairest of all, it must be increased only when all other vehicles are reduced, I would say, by the same level. Then you have double, triple, or more of that impact. So I'm going to offer a suggestion. I don't know how you would implement this. But I I'm very wary of this, and yet it it is probably the fairest approach. But to ensure my support, would you please make some language that you would tie equivalent spending decreases or something that we can work with? I don't want other commissioners coming in perhaps weaker, perhaps it's unpopular. What you have said about the personnel costs is very true and the collective bargaining agreements. And you made an analogy to home budgets. As far as I'm concerned, the quality of life does not need to suffer. It has been very acceptable during the shutdowns. Now, do we want to live like that forever? No, but we all have been affected. And I I commend you. I think you've done very well with reduced services. And while furloughs did help the budget, it's that's not a recurring thing. So when employment takes off again, you know, this is a good source. But I think there's a lot of work to be done with collective bargaining agreements. I think you need to close your eyes and say, regardless of who the person is, everybody's equal. Each job, what can be afforded by the average income of these residents? Is it 100K for this job, or is it 50K? Or is it 40K or even 39K? Once you solve that, you will have a sustainable solution. So and then you'll set an example for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just add really quickly to that, Robert, and that's thank you for that comment. And this goes back to, you know, predate me and probably the majority of the commissioners that sit on the board today. But I know that in the past, prior boards had attempted to take a firm or firmer, more aggressive stance with some of our collecting collective bargaining units. And, you know, when that happened, there was a pushback from the community around, you know, certain things that, you know, that they wanted and and, you know, they felt were important. And maybe it wasn't the community as a whole, but it was enough to get the commissioners' attention. So when we talk about making significant significant changes, you know, that can potentially lead to a lot of volatility, you know, I'll I'll say. And, you know, I think we just have to have supports of of the residents for making significant changes like that. And if the residents do support it, it is more likely that that those changes will go through or at least give the board confidence to go in from a stronger negotiating position because we understand what the residents are looking for.
I I'd like to make another point, just to to pick up on what Mr. Hislop asked, and I and I think it's something that is currently in everybody's mind who is the recipient of a current tax bill for the Cheltenham Township School District. The the township tax percentage of you of of your overall real estate taxes is 16%. The county percentage is 6%. The Cheltenham Township School District, this is through 2020, the Cheltenham Township School District is 78% of your real estate taxes. It's important to recognize that we remain a very limited percentage and that everything we do is and all those that real estate tax and these additional incremental taxes, fees, et cetera, are to cover what is a a $38 million budget and still provide the extent of services that we've talked about and that you all know and come to expect. I think it's important to just remind you that we are a minority share of the the taxes that you tend to look at and say, oh, it's the township that's coming in and and making these these additional impositions or additional requests. So I think it it's something that everybody should should pay a little closer attention to as they start to factor what they would or wouldn't be comfortable with in terms of this EIT increase.
Can we get another question?
I'd just like to respond to a couple of a series of questions that were on the chat, talking, you know, sort of along these same lines about the quality of life services. And some folks mentioned maybe doing a survey, which which certainly isn't a bad idea. And and I think that as as the board looks at looks hard at some of these items that could be on the table and and where we could find efficiencies, whether it's a survey, whether it's town hall meetings, whether it's just our regular Board of Commissioner meetings, I mean, I see a lot of familiar faces on this on the Zoom call, but a lot of new faces as well, which is great. And it's really great to get to get your feedback. So whether it's a survey, whether it's sort of keeping us honest in 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 committee meetings and and Board of Commissioner meetings, I encourage you to continue to be giving us feedback in that regard. And and we can sort of look at internally with staff the best way to ensure that we're getting all that feedback. So so thank you for those those process recommendations.
Allison, another question? Yes.
Ms. Sarivi?
Okay, good evening. First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for having this meeting. I think that it serves the residents and you well. And I look forward to the other meetings, the other town hall meetings that you're going to have as we move through this process over the coming years. I just want a clarification on something that was mentioned before. I understand if you pass the ordinance that it limits you to a 0.5 increase in the EIT. Once you reach that 0.5 increase, what happens then if if you are thinking about increasing it? Do you have to pass another ordinance, or would you be able to do it as a right?
As as the laws currently stand, we would have to do another referendum, another ordinance.
Okay, but as I, but from what I understand, as what is going through the legislature right now, you're not going to have to do a referendum for this if it passes. you're not going to have to do a referendum for this if it passes and the governor.
Correct.
The line, assuming that the 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 governor signs the bill and you only have to do it by ordinance. Once you meet that point five, and what would you have to do if you wanted to go past that point five?
The board would have to adopt another ordinance.
And we would go through the same process we normally do. It would be advertised, discussed locally. There would be meetings on it, invited the whole public like this. And we discuss that very issue before we did anything.
Okay, thank you. And I have one other question. Now, you've decided on the the point, the the maximum point five increase. Now, does that rate assume that the township will be implementing most or all the recommendations of the five year plan?
So some of the, some of the five year plan recommendations are sort of, you know, broken down into short, medium, and and longer term. You know, there are things that we are looking towards doing, like stormwater management, be to help with our flooding and our stormwater management issues. So we haven't decided yet if if and when we are going to implement all of those other recommendations. But we do know that, you know, we needed to address, we have a critical issue, you know, this budget year and next budget year. And we needed to find a way to address that immediately as we work through developing a longer term plan based upon PFM's recommendation. But at at a at a quick view, you know, the the majority of their recommendations made a lot of sense for our community.
And I assume that we'll be discussing them as they come up.
Yes.
Without doubt, yeah, one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully not by Zoom meeting.
I don't know. I kind of like this.
Actually, actually, Baron, we would never see this turnout in Curtis Hall.
Curtis Hall.
I I would be very happy holding the majority of these kinds of meetings on Zoom.
Zoom, yeah.
And and we save electricity.
Four people.
Yeah, we we, right, right.
Yeah.
The next question? Allison, do we have any more questions?
I think that is it for the verbal questions.
You mean, we can actually get through this meeting on a reasonable subject?
I think I think Emily has a question.
I have a question. I have a couple of questions. Um, hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi, yeah.
Um, so it seems like we're in a real pickle here, right? And
We're the cucumbers.
Okay, we're the cucumbers. And so does anyone have any long term projections on the health of this township? That's number my first question. My second question is, why is it so difficult to attract businesses here? My third question is, why does the school board get a two thirds of the taxes? And the township only gets a third?
No, township, not a third.
What's that?
One sixth.
One sixteen.
That's one sixth.
Okay, it seems like a third with my with my chunks that I pay out.
No, no, part of it goes to the county. Part of it goes to county. The bulk of it goes to the school district, real estate taxes. We get, what is it, fourteen percent?
Sixteen, sixteen, sixteen.
Okay, so I can answer this, but so those are some of my questions. And and why is the real estate tax so high? I don't understand that.
Like we said.
I mean, not real estate, the school tax, the school tax. Why is that so high?
That you definitely have to discuss with the school board.
But so isn't that a problem that you guys are two different entities?
It's legally, we have to be.
Yeah.
Why?
Because we're a full class township, and I believe that's
It's just the way it's set up by the Pennsylvania Legislature.
Yeah.
We can fix everything, Emily. I think that you're right. We're in a pickle. You asked the question about what the extended term looks like. Things, if things stayed the same, if we didn't have an adjustment here, by twenty twenty four, our deficit would be close to four million dollars. So part of what we're doing here, this year, the deficit, as far as we know, is projected a one point six five million as of now. It may change. The twenty twenty one deficit, I think, as I mentioned, is somewhere between two point six and four million dollars because there's still some unknowns. And again, by twenty twenty four, if things, if adjustments were made, are are approaching four million. So we are trying to keep it out of the pickle. We are doing a lot of things to encourage investment, to bring in appropriate to encourage, you know, businesses to come in. And the thing is that all those elements will take us out of the pickle and give us a little bit of opportunity to to have better control of our destiny and and to make the township still retain the quality and the attractiveness that we think and we believe most people believe it has.
You want to go first, or go?
Yeah, Emily, we are, as commissioners here, I can say we're trying our best to bring responsible business to this township. I would say, you know, prior to me being here, I don't know if that was already the case. But I just say that as commissioners in the group that are here, economic development is very important to us. And we're doing everything we can to try to bring businesses here. We really are responsible in a responsible way.
Emily, to circle back around to to one other thing, and then I'll I'll get quiet. Aaron, I saw it. We are looking at things that will take the burden off of individual taxpayers whenever we can. Baron mentioned that one of the things that PFM report, one of the things we're talking about, stormwater issues. And I think it was Tom asked an interesting question. And Tom, trust me, I do not have a way to answer that right now. But by looking at things like the Stormwater Initiative, which frankly, I wish we could have brought up this year also. It will deal with the large properties that either A, don't pay any taxes, like the nonprofits, or look at the big shopping centers and things that have these huge amounts of asphalt and impervious surface. It contribute to the the flooding and will help, you know, fill that big hole in the budget for all the costs we have because of it. And this way, you know, it the homeowner may have to pay an extra ten dollars because of his driveway. But he won't be paying the thousands and thousands of dollars that these large asphalt jungles, you know, will be covering for us.
Right.
So, you know, it's it's again, another way to try to take it off the the backs of the homeowners. Because as was stated earlier, and then I'll I'll get quiet, Baron. We were developed, designed, built as a bedroom community. That worked for many years. I grew up in Cheltenham in the fifty, sixty, seventies. I mean, I was here when bedroom community made sense and the wealth and income in the community made sense to support it. Times change, demographics change, incomes change. So we have to change how we do business. And in in that, we change the zoning, we're bringing in businesses. That won't happen overnight. Okay, we were a bedroom community for hundreds of years. We've had new zoning for two years. It'll probably take at least another year or two. But it it'll all start to work.
Commissioner Holland, would you like to?
Thank you.
Would you like to pick up the ball on this with respect to commercial reassessments? That might be something I think the community would be interested in.
Yeah, so two, two things. Thank you, Commissioner. So two things. One is, you know, to the structural nature of of, you know, our business community. It's it's pretty clear when you, if you're on six eleven and you're heading north, coming from the city. You know, if you're coming from center city and you're you're driving up Broad Street, you know, all you see is commercial, right? The majority of the way up up Broad Street, right? You hit Cheltenham, there's a little commercial, right, when you cross over, you know, and then it runs virtually residential, ninety percent residential nonprofits all the way through until you hit Jenkentown. And then you hit Commercial, and then you got Abington all the way up Commercial all the way through. So when you, when you look at the communities that surround us, Philadelphia, Jenkentown, and Abington, just on that one street, it is night and day. It's totally different. So that's that's our our issue. We weren't built, if you just take six eleven, you take that as a microcosm of our problem, that's it. We have that long strip that could be peppered with commercial. And and we don't have it. And that's a huge revenue miss for us. Nobody here's fault. It's just the way the community was was built and designed, and it'll take time to change.
I understand, but I have a
Let me, let me, let me get to this. Let me get to this second piece. So to Mitch's point, I want to, Mitch and I serve on a on a reassessment committee. And, you know, we review every property owner's attempt to get a lower real estate assessment in an effort to lower their real estate taxes, both residential and commercial. So we sit with members of the school board and make decisions on how we are going to pursue these pursue these appeals. One of the things that we've been doing is reversing the appeals on on properties that we have identified as being under assessed based upon significant increases in the real estate values over the years. So, you know, we are, we are proactively going after these these opportunities as another source and another way to generate revenue that that we are due. Now, as you can imagine, the owners of these properties are not too thrilled about that. And many times have legal counsel, and it gets into a negotiation. And, you know, ultimately, you know, many times we try to settle before court, ultimately, sometimes it goes to court. But we are proactively doing things to generate revenue that is not dependent on our residential base. I just wanted to to make everyone aware of that. I'm sorry.
Right. I just had one other question, just sorry, one other question. Why is Windmore, they don't, I mean, not Windmore, Springsville Township doesn't seem to have much commercial base, do they? Why are they so? They pay less taxes than we do. Why is that?
They don't take care of their residents the way we do.
Really?
No, we, I I don't think we could give a fair assessment as to a comparison, Emily. Because we we wouldn't have all the information. And also Emily, you'd also
It's a smaller, it's a smaller township and a small school district.
And you'd also have an income demographic and and see what contributes to other income there. So I don't want to give you a good size of police department.
Yeah, much smaller township.
Yeah, I think Dave, Dave has a question. You have to take yourself off mute, Dave.
Yeah, I was clicking the wrong place. You know, you talk about there's no commercial on on York Road. Yes, that is very true. On Cheltenham Avenue, there are three large shopping areas, at least. Cedar Brook, uh,
Melrose.
Merrill Preza.
Greenleaf now in the middle, yeah.
Right. If you go up to the intersection of Church and is it Cotman or Township Line at that point, there is a large commercial area up there. There is certainly a commercial area in Glenside, there's a commercial area in Elkins Park. So it's not like we don't have commercial areas in the township.
No, Dave, it says we have, we don't have commercial areas. It's a question of what they're able to produce, the size and scale towards the community. And quite honestly, if you want to make any sort of a comparison, drive a little farther up Old York Road. And as you go up into Abington, you get close to the Fairway. Or if you go on the other side of the city, up City Avenue, up Route one, you'll see that the scale there of commercial development and the income producing properties there are multiple times the amount that we have here. So we're trying to improve both the quality and without over densifying it with the quantity. I don't think anybody wants to see, you know, and I'm being facetious, Walmart's up and down the road on Old York Road. It it just wouldn't work for Cheltenham. It's not what we are. So we're, you know, it is quantitative and qualitative. It all has to be dealt with.
Dan, did you have something?
Baron, I was going to suggest that we might want to be wrapping it up.
I think Mr. Questions.
So let's go, let's go Steve and John, then Tom McHugh, and then maybe one more question after that. And then we'll we'll save everything else for the next town hall.
Mr. John, you have to take your mute off.
Yeah, a question on the expense side. A lot of municipalities have substantial payouts in terms of lawsuits for improper behavior of township staff, police, et cetera. Is, do we have that in Cheltenham? Do we have substantial costs based upon lawsuits against the township? And if so, how can that be minimized?
This is, this is Joe Bagley. I'm the the solicitor of the township. I can't think of any payouts based on the behavior of township officials or police officers that I'm aware of as a solicitor. Separately, the township has insurance and insurance defense council take care of cases that are brought against the township, including against police officers that are handled by the the township's insurance carrier. So as far as I'm aware of, no. And to the extent that there is any, typically, those are taken care of by insurance.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for your question.
Tom McHugh?
Tom, you there? Tom, unmute.
There, I'm unmuted now. I've looked over the PFM PowerPoint a few times now, and it does a, right away jumps into the expense side of everything for the township. But gives almost no detail whatsoever on the revenue side. I would really like to have someone describe to me what a pie chart would look like if it showed revenue. What percentage is the EIT now? What percentage will it be if we double it? What percentage is the real estate? And talking about real estate, you can have a lot of commercial income, but not from commercial businesses. A good example is Lynnwood Gardens. It's the largest apartment complex in the state of Pennsylvania. And it is still in line with a bedroom community. You have plenty of large apartment properties in the township, and they're generating revenue for us as well. So
Tom, I'm sorry. There is a pie chart on revenue in the PFM report. If you look, I may have an, I may be looking at an older version, but it's on page eleven of the document I have. It says revenue overview. And and what the pie chart reflects, just briefly, without getting too too much into the weeds, is that real estate tax accounts for forty nine percent of the general fund revenues for the twenty twenty budget. Earned income tax accounts for just twelve percent. Licensing permits and fees, about eleven, refuse charges, nine, and a few other various sundry items. So
And Tom, the the township calendar was just sent out. And whereas it may not be crystal clear to everybody, the financial information, both revenue and expenses are listed in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so just Matthew, those numbers you gave, it obviously is not in the PowerPoint that's on the township website.
I'll
I would have liked to
I'll be happy to send to send, I think it's on, I think it's on the website, but I'm not sure.
It's on there.
Tom, subsequent to this
Wait a minute, guys, it is on the website, but the version of the PowerPoint that's on the website does not include a revenue pie chart. It would have been nice to have that from the beginning for the presentation, but we didn't have it.
Well, we will be having subsequent meetings, Tom, so we'll make sure
We'll make sure you get it.
Figures are available to you. Yeah, and we fully recognize that everyone's question may may or may not be answered to their satisfaction tonight. There will be additional opportunities. What we're pledging is transparency and saying we may not have every answer tonight or have every pie chart publicly disclosed tonight, but we will try and get you that information.
Great. Well, with with that being said, we're we're at nine o'clock. I think we had a robust discussion this evening. Hopefully, all the residents in attendance. You know, whether you're for the EIT or or the increase or or not for the increase, feel good about the dialogue and and the conversation and the engagement from your neighbors in relation to this very important decision that looks like may be made for us, depending upon what the governor does. But I'll just, I'll just close it out, and then I'll But I'll just, I'll just close it out and then I'll give it back to you, Dan. I, I thank everyone for their engagement. You know, please, when you, when you hear about the next town hall, feel free to, you know, tell your neighbor and have them join. Hopefully we will not have to, I guess, rehash a lot of the questions. I wonder if there's a way that we can maybe update, create a document that answers some of these questions beforehand, before the next town hall. So those that didn't attend the first town hall will have a general idea of, of some of those answers. That may make sense from an efficiency perspective. We'll, we'll think about that. I'm Dan.
Yes, I, I want to thank everyone who attended tonight. We really appreciate your time. We appreciate your input. And, and frankly, the, we are open to your input both tonight and at future times. Will, I'll be the first to say on behalf of all the commissioners, we don't have all the answers. We're, we're not experts. We weren't elected as experts on, on every issue. Some of us have financial backgrounds, some of us have legal backgrounds. We have, we come from all different backgrounds. We have a lot of smart residents out there and we often learn a great deal from our residents. So please continue to give us your input. You can send us emails. You can attend future meetings. All of our commissioner meetings are open to the public. And our commissioner meetings are listed on the township calendar. And at least for the foreseeable future, Brad, those meetings are going to be held by Zoom. Whether, whether we like it or not, they're going to be held by Zoom. So we'll discuss that in a future time.
Unlimited party. Unlimited parties.
Again, I thank everyone for attending and I'll take, I think I have to take officially a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. So moved.
So, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.